The Community Aviation Ground Transportation Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations, and the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, now convenes this hearing. In accordance to the open government law, public notices were sent to the media on Thursday, March 20th, 2014, and again on Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. Notice of today's hearing was also posted on the legislature's website beginning March 20th, 2014. For the record, today is Thursday, March 27th, 2014, and the time is now 2:06 in the afternoon. The committees will be conducting a joint oversight hearing of the Department of Revenue Taxation and the Department of Administration, particularly on the subject of tax credits that's been in the media recently. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Senators present. First off is the Chairman of the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, to my far right. To his immediate left is Senator Brent McCready. To his immediate left is Senator Frank Uggan Jr. To my immediate left is Senator Lina Maschita. To her left is Senator Chris Duenis. Senator Tommy Morrison follows, as well as Senator Tony Adams. Thank you to all of my colleagues for being with us here today. Our two participants in today's hearing are familiar pretty much with how we conduct business here in the committee at this point, so I'll go ahead and forego the typical listing of all the different parameters of how we conduct ourselves here. I would like to invite them up to join us to testify, please. Director John Camacho of the Department of Revenue Taxation, Director Benito Mingleotney of the Department of Administration. And also if we could request that the Sergeant of Arms designate please administer the necessary oath for us to be able to discuss financial matters of this government in this hearing. Joe, Benito, thank you so much for joining us this afternoon. We wanted to have an oversight hearing particularly on the topic of tax credits. We've had a lot of discussion in our community and amongst ourselves with respect to this particular topic, its concern on how it impacts our revenue situation, whether or not tax credits are being appropriately taxed as a payment in lieu of cash, just numerous, numerous subject areas. And before I get into my line of questioning, I would like to turn over the discussion to Vice Speaker Cruz, who I know has a lot of questions and statements that he would like to begin the conversation with. But we asked both of you to be here because basically your two agencies are the two agencies that deal directly with the issue at hand, whether it's the question of identifying the tax credit recipient, what obligations intend to offset, and then how that tax credit is tracked, recorded, and applied with respect to tax payments that are owed. And so, Mr. Vice Speaker, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think my first question actually to them is, when was the decision made to issue the tax credits or allow the tax credits to be issued? In all of the press releases, I still haven't gotten a date. I get some impression it was last August.
Senator, if I may, I'd like to have some statements that I'd like to say before we start. And in honor of, first of all, Buenos dias, an of the, in honor of Chamor, I would like to say four words in Chamor, and then say my statement in English, and this will probably answer your first question. So if I may, I'd like to proceed.
Chairman.
Man gaiket pagu guidi para okua ha mas kinimprendi, ku esti programan tax credit. Itau tauta jan e komi ni dat man beneficio no esti siha na programan e fasilida. Noi man mahatsa geni esti na programan e tax credit. Esti tax credit na programa, man asetbi na e kovenlamento, como problema is alapi, tat como e differentis na klasiin programa ki man malofansia. Man mahatsa i por man ma alegra i Pasail Stadium, i Guam Raceway Park, es kualasia, jan loki eti Harmon Soccer Stadium. Tutusma se Senator Fangilena sa programamu eti ge jatana na, on manada na famagun, man beneficio gi den eti ge, kada banofanso gui parewa ha ni kuengi, bula tau to mu na seset bi jan e fasilida. Mampus, mampus bula na kuentus man masangan jan man machalaputsa ki aire jan e television e gaseta ku esti, ku esti se programan e tax credit. Sinimbakku, on manada na tau to man beneficio no esti ge sia, jan ku esti e tax credit para, para man, pa man gaipano ki lajon landfill man asetbi loki esti ge, sa ku di taza cash, lo esti man gaipano utungua na ganyania man manoi cash, lo taza cash po man manoi, pos kua ha option ma pega ki den e esti na legislatura na siña onoi tax credit como taza cash, pos eni ge, eni ge matogi kua, kua ha na man gaipano man ma maisin ko siña pa ma ilehi para u man asetbi. Anyway, I want to talk in English now. Thank you for, thank you very much for this opportunity to discuss how effective your tax credit programs have been. If not for the foresight of the legislature creating these tax programs, tax credit programs, some of these entitlements, the executive branch would not have had the ways and means to acquire a school, pay down debt, or enter into partnerships for the building of soccer fields in the Guam Raceway Park. So Senators, before I say anything else, let me first thank you for authorizing these programs and allowing the administration the flexibility and financial tools to do many good things. I am assuming my role here today is to explain to you how the use of the tax credits you've authorized has impacted our cash flow. Thank you for your concern. I am going to answer those questions. As I understand today's hearing, we specifically are looking at the tax credit entitlement program established by the legislature to compensate former landowners for the fair market value of lands taken from them. The program was first created by the legislature in 1977 for the purpose of issuing tax credits in lieu of cash, where the government of Guam cannot make cash payment for the acquisition of privately owned lands due to unavailability of revenue. Obviously, the legislature had not appropriated the funds through the annual budget process to pay this debt. Therefore, the tax credits became an entitlement to former landowners by the legislature's own design and actions. This is not to say the program is a bad thing. To the contrary, it is a viable solution, the only solution as a matter of fact on the table, and one that our cash flow can sustain. The legislature many times in the past has granted deference to the authority of the executive branch to manage cash. Our cash flow management system has worked quite well under the management of Governor So while we wonder why this oversight hearing on tax credits never happened when cash management was poor in the two decades before Governor Calvo, we do thank the legislature for this forum to celebrate our mutual success using these programs you've mandated. Indeed, the tax program for former landowners isn't the only program granted by the legislature. Our other tax credit programs have also been approved by this legislature. Public Law 24-141, in 1998, eight million, this is eight million for Guam Raceway Park program, there were twelve companies that benefited from this. Public Law 26-166, for 1.5 million, is to rehabilitate and develop and maintenance of a sales stadium. Public Law 27-85, 2004, it's one million for the soccer stadium. Public Law 27-114, this is to upgrade and maintenance of public schools facility, and so forth. There have been numerous other public laws that have authorized tax credits. DOA's role in the program is very limited. It mandates the approving officer responsible for payment of land acquisition to complete a certified statement as to the validity of the liability. The program has benefited our island in so many ways. It gives GovGuam the ability to invest in its people and community. Without the program, our island's youth would probably not be enjoying the state-of-the-art GFA soccer field in Harmon that exists today. Thank you to Senator Fangilena for introducing this legislation. You profited this field because this was an important investment of our community, and the only way it could happen at that time was through issuance of tax credits. Without the tax credit program, GovGuam would not be able to afford to pay for the necessary repairs to Pasail Stadium in Haganya, where Little League and Guam Major League baseball games are played. Again, thank you, Senator Fangilena, for your support, being one of the authors. Same goes on for Saguan Hoiku, and the list goes on. This also allows the government to pay down its liabilities such as the Lajon landfill, which is accruing interest at an escalating amount of about $100,000 per month. Senators, if my role here is to answer your question as to why DOA has approved the issuance of those liabilities, I mean the certificates, let me just save you some time and energy. We did not approve the tax credits. The legislature did. DOA has no choice but to honor those, honor tax credits that are claimed under the laws that mandate payment using these tax credits. The law governing the use of tax credits for former landowners of government condemn land states that we shall issue tax credits upon claim in lieu of cash payments. This is not a law we've created. This is a law the legislature created. I have also heard your concerns in the media that tax credits are not being issued to families of former landowners whose land was taken for the establishment of roads throughout our island decades ago. I have inquired with the accounting division and also Department of Land Management, the reason tax credits cannot be issued to these families under any of the laws you've authorized and entitlements you've mandated is that the liability does not exist on the balance sheets. The claims are not recognized either by the court's order or statute. The executive branch cannot simply create the liability by arbitrary reason. Either the legislature can create the liability through statute, or those with claims can seek relief through superior court. If it is your desire to exercise more caution in the issuance of tax credit, then it is up to you to amend the law. You can either revoke the program, or you can change the language so the tax credit no longer are an entitlement. As it stands, the former owners are entitled to these tax credits, thanks to the legislature. Before you amend the law, again, I must state that tax credits have been very helpful and useful for the good of the public. This former payment, one use by the federal government as well, has been used to build soccer fields, acquire a school, develop the Guam Raceway Park, and pay down bills. One of the tax credit programs also is an option for the 100 million immodernization of public schools. These all are laudable and necessary executive projects to which the legislature has granted ways and means toward achievement. These tax credit programs are a prime example of executive-legislative cooperation and mutual respect for the separate and equal roles our two branches have. You authorize us ways and means, and we use those ways and means to address priority issues. I understand your concern about how the use of the ways and means you have granted us has affected separately our budgetary position and our cash position. I cannot speak to the budgetary position of our government, that is a topic for the Budget Director, but I can speak with you about our cash position and how these tax credits affect cash flow. This is a fair discussion, and again, I thank you for this opportunity to have this dialogue, and I will answer your questions in this regard.
Thank you. So I go back to my initial question. When did the first landowner come in and file for a tax credit?
August. It was August of 2013?
During the month of August, if memory serves me right, this legislature was in the midst of our passing of the budget. Was there any attempt by the administration to inform the legislature that these tax credits were being issued or approved?
Well, Senator, thank you for that question. If I recall, in August of 2013, Attorney Dooley had sent a letter to the senators informing them of, you know, asking for payment on the judgment for the Lajon landfill. This judgment was entered into by the court in November of 2012, so this body is well aware of that liability, but did not address it in the budget.
Did the governor include a request to pay the $26 million in the 2014 budget?
That would be the Budget Director to answer.
Well, conveniently, he's not here, and I'm just saying.
Well, Senator, I mean, with all due respect, this oversight was called upon for just the.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you all knew how much was coming in. It was like when we all of a sudden found out there was additional Section 30 money. When Adaloupe issues press releases every five minutes during the public hearing or during our discussions on the floor, surely at some point someone should have said, you should take into account that there may be a shortfall in healthy futures funds. Your revenue projection for healthy futures funds may not be as great as you think it is because we now are issuing tax credits. For how much was issued in August?
I don't have the numbers, but they were not all. They were not all requested at one time. Certain owners requested or elected to get the credits. I think at that early point of time, maybe only one of them basically elected to take the credit.
And you know the section that created this authorization, that is a very good tool, management tool, as you guys put it. Are either one of you aware of the GAR requirements for this program?
When you say GAR requirements, what do you basically imply?
The rules, the government administrative rules and regulations as it relates to this specific tax credit program.
Yeah, we followed that regulation.
You did?
Yes.
And when I sent you a FOIA asking for who had filed, who the landowners were, what was your response to me?
I could not give you the answer because you were asking for a taxpayer. That was the first. But when you came back and asked for numbers, I gave you numbers.
But is there a GAR requirement? No, your response to me was, you do not have the names of the landowners or who the landowners are because that's not within the purview of your department. Do you remember that response?
I.
I can pull and read it to you verbatim if you want, John.
Basically, our office basically would not allow our department to basically disclose taxpayer information or taxpayers' name, so that's why we said at this point of time we could not, we could not send those information to you.
If I made a FOIA request and asked you to redact the name of the taxpayer, would your department be able to provide me with copies of Form DRT 12/21-77-B with the appropriate names and dates in August and subsequent months?
That basically is a tax document. It's like asking me to give you a 1040, a 1040A, and redact those things. I think that's our, we always try not to give out anything that's a tax document. We always say we will give out numbers that represents your concern on any of these things.
Is the confidentiality with GITT, I mean the Guam Internal Income Tax?
I think both, whether it's income tax or local taxes.
But you have no problem with publishing the names and property numbers for thousands of landowners who owe you property tax, right?
Because that's required by law.
And if we were to change it so that you have, the DRT has to give us this list, did each one of the landowners fill in a form?
Yes, they were all, followed the regulations, and they were all submitted to our department.
And in all your responses to me, did you bother to tell me that they had complied with the GAR requirements?
If you're talking about the regulation, yes, they basically went through that process with the certificate and specifying the amount and whatever that requirement specifies on that certificate.
And if I was to make a FOIA request and allow you to redact names and signatures, but just the dates, so I can see when those things were filed, would you be able to provide that?
Well, I have to basically look, talk to my legal counsel and our disclosure officer.
Because I'm just trying to figure out whether or not you complied, because your response to me was that the Department of Revenue Taxation did not have the names of the landowners because that was, that was within a different department and not yours. Your response to me was not, I'm not allowed to divulge that name. You said that the names of the landowners and their property was not something within your purview, but the GAR requires you to get a listing of the certification of real property acquired for government, and it's supposed to be filled in. Are you aware of that?
What was your question again? What was your question again? We received a letter from the Department of Revenue Taxation on the amount and the taxpayer's election to take those credits.
And had they filled in all of the required GAR forms for the application and for the designation of the property?
I would have to basically go back and make sure that those documents, but that's the procedure.
Are you familiar with Section 15101B? 11 GCA.
I don't have that.
In the receipt of these, is there a waiver of confidentiality for these, for these tax credits?
I'm not too familiar with what section here.
Collection of Taxes. But, so was, how much and what months were the amounts applied for?
Well, basically, they started to take the credits in August of 2013 and forward, you know.
How much for each of those months? Not asking for names, just amounts.
I think basically, for each month, the first month was $487,668.19, for September is $554,961.66, for October it's $468,516.65, for November it's $522,876.80, for December it's $611,221.76, and for the latest one we have here is for January of 2014, or $671,168.6.
My abacus is broken, but just looking at this, this does not add up to 13 million.
Well, this is, you're asking what's taken, what's authorized and what's taken is two different terms. What was authorized is 13.3 million.
And so I want to know, during the last seven months, for each month, how much was authorized?
I would have to go back and get that number. I don't have that number with me right now. I have the number, what was totally authorized as of a certain date, which is right now, is 13.3, which includes the interest, and what I have taken each month from that 13.3.
The redeemed.
The redeemed, yes. What was used or redeemed.
And that's this list that you've given us?
Yes, that's what I.
Where did Adaloupe get 2.9?
You've got to understand that time makes a difference. If somebody were to be asked today, it's 2.9. We get more information, it increases because taxpayers are taking the credits, so that's the difference. Maybe when we do another report, it won't be 3.3, it'll probably be more because we see more credits taken.
And in the testimony you just gave me, the 617, when was that last redemption?
600 what?
617,000. The last redemption.
Oh, that was in for the month of January.
January 28th, right?
January 14th, yes.
But Adaloupe was saying on March 7th that the amount was 2.9. And the report that you gave me was that.
Well, again, you know, it's when we get the information, it's like when we process the returns, you know, we don't get all the information at one time. It's a timing, it's a timing thing. You ask me today, I'll say 3.3. Tomorrow, if I go back to my office and they find more being taken, it'll go up.
I understand. And so my question again is, when Adaloupe made the statement on the air that it was 2.9 million?
That was the information we had at that point of time.
But when you sent me my subsequent, the subsequent FOIA response, you stated that as of February 28th, that the amount was 3.3.
Well, because they got more data, you know, there was.
It was from January 28th, that was a whole month earlier.
But you've got to remember that this number has been taken, January is normally due February 20. So not all returns are probably captured at any one point of time. You know that right now it could be more than 3.3 because if they run the reports and they find that these people are taking more credits, then our numbers are going to change. I mean, if we run a report today of 2.9, and we don't run a report until a week after, it's still going to be at 2.9.
Just let's get it clear. The last number that you gave was 617, and from your testimony, is that that was for January 28th, 2014, correct?
It was for January.
The month of January?
The month of January, yes.
Okay. And you had sent me a FOIA response that said that the amount of 3.3 was. Okay. And you had sent me a FOIA response that said that the amount of three point three was as of February the third, I mean, February twenty-eighth. Is that correct?
I believe I did, yes.
And the number that Adalou was saying was the amount, was two point nine, was on, stated it on, on the year, was two, was March the seventh, was two point nine.
And again, i- i- when did we get that two point nine? I, I, I have to rely on my staff. If they got that a week ago or two weeks ago, the numbers can change.
If my calendar is right, February the twenty-eighth is about seven days before March the seventh.
I know, but the information that, that we're trying to say changes, because if we get new information, it'll change.
Which then brings me to another point. Um, what's the date today?
Today's the, uh, twenty-seventh?
Have the three, the two of you plus Mr. Rios issued the, uh, special fund report yet?
Which one?
The, the cash balance in the, in the, in the special funds. I guess that's what they call it. I, the last one that I have is dated February the twenty-eighth. What date is it due? Ms. Manglotnia? The twenty-first. If you're being cute about it. Isn't it?
That's what you're saying, so. No, I have a listing. I have a lot of reports that are due, so I don't memorize every single report that I have. We have a tracking list of the reports that are due. I didn't say I didn't know. I said I have a tracking list that I go with the list of the due dates.
And?
Because there's a lot of reporting requirements.
But the, but the February statement is, is past due. Um, are, how, what is the current condition of the Healthy Futures Fund?
It is tracking.
It is tracking?
That's, that's, that's my, my understanding as of this morning.
Um, can I get, uh?
Maybe there, there hasn't been any, I mean.
Can you go to the first page of that and tell me what date that is that, uh, your administration sent that out? On the first page. What's that for? The month of?
January twenty thirty-first.
Yes. And go to Healthy Futures Fund.
Okay.
How are we doing in Healthy Futures Fund?
You know, Senator.
How are we doing in Healthy Futures?
It's showing a, a, a decrease of, uh, from, a comparison from, uh, twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen. You're comparing actual, which is a decrease of four hundred and sixty thousand, but this is a reporting at one point in time, at a period in time, and, uh, there are adjustments that are continuously being made, so this is not necessarily an accurate, th- this is the statement captured at that point in time before adjustments are made. So this is, this is the reason, I mean, this is the, the problems with these reports is these are statements that are produced at one point in time before all adjustments are, are made, are posted.
And does that show that it's tracking?
This one is tracking, but my, this morning when I spoke with, with, uh, my accounting manager, she, she was telling me that, that it is tracking.
And what do you guys consider tracking?
That it's, wha- whatever was, um, projected is, 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 uh, that's what we're, we're getting.
And so this, between January thirty-first and the end of February, the report that you're going to now provide us is going to show that we're, we're, we're.
If the adjustments are posted.
Uh, will be posted.
Once the adjustments are posted.
And so the report that we're going to get is going to show that, uh, it's even.
If the adjustments are posted, but this is my understanding from the, from the accounting manager.
And what's the cash situation in that, in that account? On, on, on the papers that you have? Not, not necessarily what I have, but.
This is showing the, the revenue.
Right.
Not necessarily the cash. This is the revenue that's.
Yeah, and do you have, do you have the most recent, um, cash statement?
I don't have, I mean, Senator, I'm here to respond to, I'm sorry, but I didn't prepare all these documents that you're asking right now, because my understanding is we're here to discuss and clarify tax credits. If had I known that you, you wanted to, to, to request for these, uh, information, I would have been more prepared to provide.
And of the three point three that you guys are willing to admit has been redeemed, what has, what, what tax, specific tax, has it been redeemed against?
Okay, that, that would be, um, John might have that information, but even, even if it was redeemed for tobacco tax, for instance, that, that impacts the Healthy Futures Fund. It impacts it in, in, um, it's, it's a cash situation, but the revenue is still accounted for and the revenue is still realized for the Healthy Futures Fund. So we always ensure that, that the Healthy Futures Fund is made, all those programs that are, you're probably referring to, which are the cancer funds, we, it, it gets its, its, uh, its funding. So if you're concerned with that, I know that we, we, we have transmitted the funding for the Healthy Futures Fund. I mean, for the cancer fund.
John, how much was, um, debited against the, um, against the Healthy Futures Fund in, in your three point three calculation?
Uh, two point eight.
Two point eight of the three point three?
Uh, it shows here, yes, uh, our, our three point three, uh, under, you're talking about tobacco tax?
Yes, tobacco and alcohol.
Yes. Oh, and alcohol. Uh, I, I would say probably three, uh, two point, uh, three, two, two point four.
So it's one point nine plus about five hundred thousand from, from tobacco, correct?
Say it again?
The redemption of tax credits against tobacco was about one point nine, is that correct? One point eight?
It, it, the report shows here two point two, and the alcohol is a hundred and eighteen thousand, so.
So two point two, so it's a, two point three.
Two point two, two point four.
And, um, as Director of Administration, you're assuring me that all of the programs within the Healthy Futures Fund will be fully funded as, as we had anticipated.
That's my understanding.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll have a, a question and I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Speaker. Um, I do have a number of questions. Uh, trying to figure exactly where to start here. Uh, on the, on the issue of tax credits, uh, the recipients of tax credits, I, I noticed something that was kind of, kind of disturbing to me when I was researching it, and that is that, um, one of the recipients of tax credits is currently, um, a qualifying certificate holder. Are you guys aware of that? John, you should be aware of that.
I have to share after.
Namely, um, Cortec. Cortec, which recently signed a, a lease purchase agreement with the government of Guam, is also a qualifying certificate holder. You, you should be familiar with that, because you're, you're having to offset qualifying certificates to tax revenue.
Basically, you're, you're saying, you know, what I know on taxes, I cannot disclose, so, uh, basically.
Is Cortec a qualifying certificate holder?
Oh, in, 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 in sense, if there's a qualifying certificate, I guess if they are.
Now, I'm just trying to figure out, why would a qualifying certificate holder who has tax exemptions want a tax credit when they already have tax exemptions? And see, what happens, and the reason why it's so troubling to me is, if they're not, if they already have tax exemptions and we're giving them tax credits, that means that it's pretty much assured that those tax credits are going to be sold. And those, um, tax credits are going to be used to offset taxes from other companies that would have actually had to pay them.
Well, you know, Senator, actually, if those, those, uh, if, if you're mentioning Cortec, I mean, I'm sure that they would have rather received cash than, than the certificates, the tax credits, because cash you get, you get a hundred percent. But if they sell the tax credits, they, they're, they're selling it at a discount.
Yeah, but, uh, tha- and that's what I'm trying to.
Uh, that's what I've heard.
That's, uh, but.
I, I have heard that. I don't have to say from who, but I have heard that statement made.
Yeah, so, um, you know, when, when it comes to the, um, the, and so that's, that's what I'm trying to really get a handle on this. Because, you know, when you, when you go and you get a qualifying certificate, right, um, you have to meet certain standards. You know, you have to employ X amount of people, you know, we, we set up certain parameters for us to be able to grant that tax exemption. But when we give tax credits to a company that has a qualifying certificate, they're basically able to give a tax exemption to other companies without having those very same parameters set that we typically would set in, in a qualifying certificate. And so not only now do we have one company that has all these tax exemptions because of the qualifying certificate, but we now have a whole bunch of unknown companies out there that will be having tax exemptions without the same kind of parameters that we would establish of a qualifying certificate. And I'm trying to understand, if they do have a qualifying certificate, which I know they do, why would they want to be compensated in tax credits? Unless they're going to then turn around and sell those tax credits. And the question you posed, Benita, was, you know, of course, they would rather take cash. But you just made it very clear earlier in your testimony that problema isolapi.
That's correct, and that's why we're issuing tax credits.
No, but see, the reason why they, they can't, they won't take cash is because we don't have any cash to offer.
That's right.
And so they're taking the tax credits and they're turning around and selling those tax credits. But one of the reasons why we don't have any cash is because we have all these tax credits that are offsetting the cash that we would have had.
Well, if that is such a problem, we know this, this body has, has proffered a lot of, of, of projects through tax credits, because there's no cash.
I understand, but, and, and so.
You know, when, when you, Senator, when, when you look at, at the, uh, the redemption of the tax credit for the last few years, you would need to be a business that make a billion, billions of dollars to be able to redeem all those tax credits. But looking at what has been redeemed the last three years, uh, it's been twenty, you know, twenty million has been redeemed. And we have been able to manage those, despite that, those redemption of tax credits, we have been able to manage the cash. So, so I would see that, that this is a really good program that this legislature has proffered, and, and there's thousands and thousands of people out there, the whole community are benefiting from this. I mean, look at the, look at the soccer field, look at the Pasail Stadium, the schools are being built, we're gonna have a new school.
And all of those projects had bills that went through the legislature that were approved by the people of Guam to issue the tax credit?
It, it's what, whatever that this legislature approved, why needs of, of issuing tax credit, those laws, this bill that the executive branch have followed.
Yeah, so, so all of those projects that you're talking about, the thousands of people for the soccer field, the schools, those all were individual public laws that were voted on and approved, they had public hearings, and they became law, and that's why those tax credits were issued. But the question of this compensation for the Lazon landfill, did we ever have a public law that authorized the issuance of those tax credits?
There, I'm glad you brought that up. Public law fourteen dot sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-seven, it was approved. There was a court judgment in, in twenty, um, November twenty twelve.
So we're using a nineteen seventy-seven law to issue out the tax credits?
As long as the law is valid, I mean, it's, you know, there, there was.
Hasn't been repealed.
It has not been repealed. There, there was a, there was an audit done by O P A in November two thousand and seven. And there, there was notice given to the legislature recommending the repeal of that, of that piece of legislation, but nothing had been done. So I am taking the position that this legislature thinks that it's, that's, that is a good law and it should remain in the books, and it has not been removed, so it's still there. And it is the election of the landowners to come forth to elect, to receive tax credit in lieu of cash. It's, it's an option for them. And they have taken that option, and if, once they exercise that option, we don't have a choice. It's, it's the law stays, we, we sh- we shall issue the tax credit.
And we've issued already thirteen point three million has been authorized.
It has been, that's, that's correct.
So the, the debt, which was what, thirty million, that should now be down to about, uh, uh, twenty, about seventeen million now, we're not accruing interest on the other thirteen point three.
Uh, I'm not sure on, on the.
No, that, that's how it should have been, because if we authorized it to pay down the debt, then the debt should have been reduced by thirteen point three million. We shouldn't be accruing interest on that thirteen point three anymore.
It's been reduced.
Then why do we authorize thirteen point three?
When, when they come in and, and, and basically they present their, their certificate, they say, the government owes me this much money. Obviously, they can't take all the credits at one time, so every month, these people are afforded to offset their taxes against, uh, their, their credits that they're allowed to under, uh, uh, public law fourteen dot sixty-nine. So the running balance, if, if you wanna look at what was authorized, uh, uh, basically is, is thirteen point three minus two. Thirteen point three, we're looking at maybe ten million, nine point nine million.
No, wh- why do we authorize thirteen point three?
Because the law.
I'm sorry?
You allowed it.
No, no, no. Why did that, why is thirteen point three the figure? It's thirty million, why didn't we authorize thirty million?
Because those are the elections.
Each person, each taxpayer has the option to come forth and, and apply.
So if they've already claimed that they're, that they're going to use thirteen point three million for tax credit, shouldn't the debt be reduced by thirteen point three and not accruing any more interest? Why is it that they've already locked in their payment, but they're also still going to be accruing interest on those payments?
Actually, Senator, uh, that, that is a question that, that I intend to post to the A G's office to clarify, because I did ask that question, whether the, the interest stops accruing once you issue the tax credit.
Absolutely, it really should.
But, but it's not clear. It's, it's a, it's, it's a legal question. And, uh, but, you know, if I were those tax, I mean, those landowners, I'd, I'd hang on and, and hold off on redeeming the credits or, or claiming for, for payment, because I am accruing interest, because the, the court gave them six percent interest to approve from January two thousand and eight. And you can't go to the bank today and, and get six percent interest, you'll be lucky you get two.
No, I agree, and that's why, you know, for me, it's so important for us to figure out.
We need to identify funding to pay these people off.
You know, what, what I think would have been really good for the people of Guam is if we all came to the table and talked together. One of the things I was working on in my office prior to even finding out about this, because I had no idea about it, was trying to figure out how to pay that off through a combination of maybe property swaps, tax credits, you know, um, uh, payment commitments. But we never, we never sat down and talked about it. You know, all of a sudden, we just kind of found out that thirteen point three million in tax credits has been committed to paying off this obligation, without really sitting down and assessing whether or not. Hang on, Benita, let me finish, please. Without really sitting down and assessing whether or not there were other options on the table for us to pay off that obligation. And so now, this thirteen point three million is affecting things like the tobacco tax, which is affecting things like the Healthy Futures Fund. And I know that you're stating that the gu- governor's gonna transfer money into that fund to make good on those obligations.
No, 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 that's, I, I didn't, I didn't say that the governor's gonna transfer money into that fund. I'm saying that that revenue is recognized as, as a revenue for Healthy Futures Fund, fund. It is, it's a difference, it's a distinct, distinct, uh, distinction between revenue and cash. This is a cash issue. The revenue did come in for the Healthy Futures Fund, so what we do is we ensure that the cash is available for that funding.
And the credit was claimed against the cash that's supposed to be going into that fund.
Can, can you repeat that again?
The credit was claimed.
I just wanna make sure that you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I very much understand. I wanna make sure that, that.
I wanna make sure that you understand.
The, the rev- the, the credit was claimed against the cash that was supposed to go into the, into that Healthy Futures Fund.
The credit was not claimed against the cash. This is, this is, this is just a revenue. The credit was, was, uh, claimed to pay their tax.
And what would you have paid your tax worth?
Tax credit.
No, but in lieu, i- i- you used the tax credit to pay that, but what would you have used if you didn't have a tax credit?
You, you used cash.
Cash. And so the tax credit was used to offset the cash that would have gone into that fund.
But, but when the tax credit, regardless, regardless of whether they use cash or tax credit, the revenue is still recognized.
It's recognized, but you cannot, you cannot pay for programs, the government of Guam can't use tax credits to pay for programs from the Healthy Futures Fund.
But, but what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is we still use the ca- the general fund cash to. To say is we still use the ca- the general fund cash to pay for for those funds, especially the cancer fund.
And so where does the offset come from? What, if if we u- if we're taking cash from the general fund to cover the two point two million, then where is that two point two million coming from? If it's, cash has to, has to come from somewhere.
Management tool that that's we 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 do.
So where's it coming from? Because I understood that we appropriated everything that that we had coming in, are we tracking anything in excess of what we've appropriated?
That's 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 what I'm trying to say again, that that I think you're you're mistaking the cash and the credit that comes in. They're they're both recognized as revenue, so regardless whether the the cash did not come in, the revenue is still recognized. So this is basically, it's a cash management that we do. And we, and I believe we we have been successful in doing it in the last three years, despite twenty million dollars of tax credit redemption.
But see, that that's just, and that's where I just get so confused. I mean, I I I see what you're saying about revenue and cash, but how can you say that we had twenty million in tax credit redemptions, which is twenty million in cash, it's supposed to come into the government? How can we say that we had twenty million more come in, credited out, and every, and we were able to make good on everything else? I mean, something, something is, something is not getting cash, otherwise we had.
No, but Senator, I can't say that we're making good in everything else, we're, we are about sixty to ninety days on payables, that's why you always have that delay. But it it does, it does, it's, you know, it it does impact the the cash, the cash, but we are, we have been able to manage, that's what I'm trying to say, we have been able to manage, we've been paying tax refunds, we're we're paying vendors um, timelier than than this government has ever seen. And and like I said, the last three years, uh, over twenty million of tax credits have been redeemed. But we, but we are still making careful, ensuring that the allotment to the judiciary is received timely. We had trouble in the first year of this administration, I would get a call from Finn, say, are you gonna release our allotment? Because you know, we're gonna meet, we need to give the senators the money, I said, sure, maybe by next week, I'll give it to you.
No, for me, my perspective, I do believe we are doing better. And I think that the whole reason why we're having this oversight hearing is we wanna make sure that we're doing, we we're just getting better. You know, one of the things that I just found, so absolutely, no, I do, I absolutely do. You know, I, first of all, I don't, our our job is to just constantly improve, and one of the things I was, I was gonna share was, um, you know, our people years ago, you know, tax refunds took forever for them to get it.
Yeah.
Now they're getting it to the point where, you know, even if it's a a a month already, they want it, you know, I mean, the the expectation is rising with the standard.
Within one week of filing.
Yes, and our our people's expectation is rising with the standard, and that's a good thing. And what we need to do now is constantly try to live up to that standard.
Yes.
And so part of us trying to meet that obligation, live up to that standard, is making sure that, you know, all of these areas are are as air tight as possible. Because the, this four hundred, five hundred thousand in tax credits that we've been issuing since August, those are all additional refunds that we could have paid.
Uh, Senator, please, please, may I, may I just make a correction on that? I mean, you're you're saying that we issued four hundred million in tax credit?
No, four hundred thousand in August, four hundred eighty-seven thousand in August was credited out. Five hundred fifty-four thousand in September was credited out. Four hundred sixty-eight thousand in October, these are all tax credits that were claimed.
Senator, Senator.
We we are paying tax refunds.
No, I, yes, you are, I'm I'm not saying that you're not, but what I am saying is that this cash could have been cash for tax.
But but look at all the benefits of all these projects that have that have that have been.
I understand, all I'm saying is we're all, we're we're, we need to be, we need to make sure that we're looking at all, we're looking at cash as it relates to every obligation that we have. You know, the Lazon landfill is one of them, and the reason why we're saying we're gonna take tax credits and not bring in the tax revenue and not pay out the tax refund is because that Lazon landfill is accruing this interest at six, seven percent. Now, if we're going to issue and authorize thirteen point three million to pay that down, then fine, I'm I'm okay, you know? The the trade off is maybe we're not gonna pay out refunds as fast, because, ha- hang on, please. Maybe we're not gonna pay out refunds as fast because we're going to make sure that we're not accruing that interest rate. But if that interest rate is still being accrued, then maybe that cash should have gone out as refunds first. And so you know, thi- this is as policymakers and as public servants, both appointed and elected, these are the kind of discussions that we're just going to need to have in the public arena, so everybody can understand what we're trying to accomplish and why there's this, there's these these shared concerns here. So I, you know, I think that that all of us want what's best for our people. You know, we don't want to be paying a seven percent interest rate. We also don't want people to be waiting any longer than they have to. And what we need to do is make sure that we're asking the necessary questions so that we understand up here, our people understand, and our priorities are all on the same page. But um, I I that, I I did have another question, and that is with respect to the taxing of tax credits. Um, now, tax credits, yes, tax credits are payments in lieu of cash, right? Which means that if we did not give them the tax credit, they would have received cash. Now, if we paid somebody in cash, that would have been taxable event, they would have had to pay taxes on that. So are we, are we taxing tax credits when they're used to compensate in lieu of cash?
Oh, well, you have to look at the the transaction, what what they're giving up is land, so, you know, uh, when when they recognize what they receive in in place of land, I, you know, they they gotta look at what their basis is and and what what, how much you're getting, so if there's any gain, then uh, they're responsible to pay on those gains, so just like any, and it's like any person who who disposes property, it's it's almost the same thing, you dispose property and and then whether you get a uh, uh, if you get a an increase or a gain, then those are subject to, unless there's a law that authorized that they're not subject to tax.
So when we're issuing, when we're compensating a landowner for their land in tax credits, they're having to claim that 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 compensation, if it's above a certain exempt amount? As as um, a capital gain?
It it it's something in 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 lieu of of cash, so it's just like receiving uh, cash, I mean, uh, receiving cash, but this time, you're not receiving it, you're you're receiving it for other benefits. So um, whatever that amount is, is you actually compare to how much you bought that property, how you acquired that property. And it's just like selling a a house.
Yes, of course, so so if the property, if you bought it at twenty thousand and you got tax credits for forty thousand, you gotta pay ta- you gotta pay taxes on the twenty thousand dollar gain.
That's that's correct.
Okay, and we're making sure that we're going to be assessing that?
This is, this is basically.
Not gonna be an assessment, I mean, the taxpayer, that's their responsibility to to report it on their, whether it's uh, a ten forty if they're if if they're uh, individual, or whether it's an eleven twenty, uh, S, uh, for S corporation, eleven twenty, or ten sixty-five, if it's a if it's a.
No, I understand, it's their, it's their job to to report it, yes.
Report it, and then whether whether their basis exceeds the the cash, the the what compensation they receive, they they receive, then they're gonna pay tax on it, if it, but if it doesn't, then, you know, there's zero tax.
No, I understand, I I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're we're paying special attention to this, because it's such a unique uh, a a unique um, uh, income stream, you know, I mean, we typically.
You're targeting, you're targeting taxpayers though, that's, I don't know if uh, you know, the the, I'm sure that that DRT has their system of of auditing taxpayers. You're not gonna go now and start targeting taxpayers, just like what the IRS did, right?
Basically, uh, voluntary compliance, in other words, uh, a a taxpayer has his obligations when he files his return, it says under penalties and perjury, that he, you know, reported all his income and all his expenses uh, according to law.
But we are, we are, uh, I remember Vice Speaker Cruz asked about a waiver that was necessary to be signed, correct? And I do know that, for example, qualifying certificates, we do track those because of the special nature of the QC and the need for us to keep track, we're not targeting the taxpayer, it's the nature of the transaction. So I'm, you know, do we need to enact some kind of law to make sure that we track that particularly? Because, you know, for us to to be issuing out these tax credits and not tracking them and not making sure they're getting taxed properly, one of the concerns I had, going back to that question with regards to um, the um, tax credit recipient also having a qualifying certificate, is uh, let's say I have a qualifying certificate, alright, and you compensate me with a tax credit. I take that tax credit and I sell it at a discount to taxpayer X, I sell it for eighty cents on the dollar. That eighty cents that I sold it for isn't going to get taxed necessarily because of my qualifying certificate, but now that new taxpayer has a one dollar of credit that they bought for eighty cents. If they redeem that one dollar of credit, they receive a twenty-five percent capital gain, twenty cents of eighty cents. You guys follow? So are 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 we making sure that they're reporting a taxable gain on that instrument? Because it's like they're, they're um, they're they're realizing a capital gain on the tax credit that they're, that they're claiming, that they bought it at a discount.
I again, it it all depends on what, why are they, this, uh, why are they receiving these benefits? If if, for example, uh, I'm receiving benefit because I'm leasing my land, so, or house or building, then I'm really receiving rental income, you know? So in in place of getting cash, I'm leasing my property, so, you know, the fair market value that a great property is what I report. And 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 if it's rental income, it should be reported on the rental income, uh, on on s- on on every twenty of the month. That's that's the responsibility as as a taxpayer. Uh, whether they, whether they get a gain or not, that will be adjusted, in other words.
Yeah, so I, you know, because of these tac- these tax credits and the and the and the high likelihood, I mean, for me, I'm I'm very worried about um, us having these these unique, these uniquely taxable events that were not, that were, I I mean, if 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 the mentality is that to to track it um, in particular would be the target, I'm kind of concerned about that, because now, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not too confident that these tax credits are being um, are being taxed, I mean.
And and again, you know, it it's voluntary compliance, uh, you know, uh, if if we find that at least any particular taxpayer, doesn't have to be this taxpayer, any taxpayer out there that we know is not compliant with the law, we will, you know, look into it.
I said, let it kind of put it into perspective, like, for example, there's thirteen point three million, let's just say it's thirteen million, right? If we pay, if we pay that in cash, you know, and we recovered the the taxes on that cash, let's say it's twenty percent, that would have been two point six million dollars that we'll recover in taxes. But if we give a thirty million dollar tax credit, and that tax credit is is utilized for whatever purpose and not taxed properly, we're not recovering anything from that. And so the 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 true cost of issuing a tax credit goes beyond just the savings and the interest rate that we're using to pay off the obligation. It also go, it also speaks volumes to foregone tax revenue that we're not gonna be bringing in if we if we had taxed those tax credits properly. So that's why I'm very, very, I'm 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 really alarmed about the tax credit as a financial tool, because if if we're not tracking it properly and taxing it accordingly, you know, what is the true cost of the of the financial?
I think that the main, the main issue here is 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 the program on tax credit, what is the benefit that this community have have uh, received? And um, judging from the the history of the redemption of tax credit, it has been manageable, it 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 looks like it's working, and I mean, of course, if you're gonna redeem two hundred million of tax credit in one year, then it is, it it's gonna impact the the pro- the programs, but so far, um, it it has, it has been, you know, the the amount that has been re- redeemed has been manageable. And and since this government doesn't have the cash to pay for those programs, uh, this is, this is what this legislature has has continued to to uh, approve and and support.
Do any of my colleagues have any other questions on the on the tax credit issue? Speaker Peng.
Thank you very much, uh, first of all, I just wanna make a distinction uh, between the tax credit program that was authorized by a bill I introduced versus what Ms. Manglona is giving me credit for. Um, number one, the tax credit for the soccer association is a matching tax credit. It's for an investment in the facilities itself, it's not to pay for Guam, for government operations, nor is it to reduce government debt. It is for an investment in facilities to benefit the uh, community. So, and it is required to be matching, so for every dollar in tax credit redeemed by the soccer association to build the facility that they've built, they had to invest a dollar of their own money. So it's not a hundred percent tax credit, it's a fifty percent tax credit, which resulted in an investment of an additional one point five million of outside money that would not have been invested had that tax credit not been there. That's the biggest difference. The second, the second biggest difference, would you just let me, uh, the second biggest difference is there are rules and regulations for how to claim those tax credits. And those are tracked by the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Guam Economic Development Authority. And all of those are transparent, and reports are to be filed. The tax credit that we're talking about here is supposed to be governed by the GAR that is here. Secondly, they're capped. So we know that we are going to allow up to one point five million of tax credit for the soccer facilities. Nothing more than that, so we know what the effect of that tax credit is going to be on the operation of the government of Guam. So we account for that in, of course, the budget process, in allocating the revenues we receive for the operations of the government of Guam. That's one of the biggest differences between this and the other tax credit program. And I'm not saying it's an administrative tax credit program, I'm just saying, what is in place now, which is being implemented after forty years of never being implemented in the past. So we don't know, at least we know that it's thirteen point three and we've capped it. So I'm assuming that when you authorize thirteen point three, that you think that you can take thirteen point three in collections for this fiscal year. Take that out of the collections, reduce the budget amount by thirteen point three if revenues come into, as projected. If there are surpluses, then you would take it from the surplus. If there is a deficit, then you are actually short an additional thirteen point three for the operations of the government of Guam. So I'm assuming that, uh, or maybe I shouldn't assume, that that you did your calculation and said, we're gonna authorize thirteen point three, and that's what we can afford to be claimed against of not collecting thirteen point three million dollars in in revenue, because we're going to allow them to offset that cash payment that would have come in up to thirteen point three in uh, in lieu of us making a payment back to them of thirteen point three. So that that really is the biggest difference, and I wanna, again, just say that we are investing in facilities in the tax credit programs that I that I had worked on, and not in in government operations. And and that's the, that's the difference. The issue, John, of confidentiality. In in a, in a letter you sent to me, you cited the Guam uh, Income Tax Territorial Code as what is covered by confidentiality agreements uh, that does not allow you to res- to to release the information. Where in the statute does it say that the tax credits for taxes other than the Guam territorial income tax is confidential information?
I I I believe there's a particular section in in the local statute that talks about that.
Where is that?
I I gotta go back, I don't.
Well, why why won't you cite that to me? And just cite me just the Federal Income Tax Code regulation that says it's confidential? If you believe that there is local statute that makes alcohol taxes confidential, tobacco taxes confidential, business privilege tax confidential, why wouldn't you tell me where in the code that is? And just cite the IRS code?
Um, ba- basically, uh, um, through through consultation with with the disclose software and the legal counsel, that's the section that we we wanted to put.
I know, but it only covers the IRS code, it doesn't cover the local tax code.
But there is a section in the in the uh, the local statute that talks about.
Can can you, can you then reissue your your response?
I I gotta, there is still a provision there that does not allow, uh, you know, uh, uh, us to disclose taxpayer information.
And I'm asking you, on on the territorial income tax, can you send me one that says alcohol taxes, tobacco taxes are confidential information? And are governed by confidentiality agreements?
Any, any, any tax documents?
Yes, I know, I've had CPAs read yours, I've had CPAs read your attorneys and CPAs read what you had sent to me, and I I'm getting a different reading. So can you, can you send me exactly where I, you can link the Guam territorial income tax and the provision for confidentiality for income taxes to the tobacco, alcohol, and um, and other tax, local taxes enacted?
I'll I'll look, I'll I'll get back to you.
Okay, the other thing, John, is it appears that the applicants who made and elected to take these tax credits are selling them. So I've heard Ms. Manglona say she's.
Heard.
Where in the GAR does it allow the applicant and the taxpayer that is owed the tax credit to sell it to another, to have somebody else claim that tax credit on his behalf? The GAR doesn't, I I can't find it, it's a two-page GAR, and it doesn't say here that the claimant can sell his tax credit to somebody else, and that other person can claim it against his taxes due.
I I don't see it either, uh, in in the G A R, but uh.
But it, that's what's happening, you're telling me.
It it it's not restrictive, it didn't say either that they can sell it or 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 transfer it, I I didn't say that either.
Really, so, and and so why, how did you come to the conclusion of going one way or this the other?
It it's because it's silent, in other words, it's not restrictive, in other words.
But it's not permissive either, and and so where is the opinion that said, that advised you to go the other way? Was it based on statutory construction? Was it based on the legal opinion that says this is silent on? Because the other tax credits issued and programs kind of speak to that, how you can transfer them and so forth, the, you know, but this tax credit doesn't say that at all. And so if we have kind of a policy that says we're gonna treat treat tax credits like this, and when we want them to be, when we want them to be transferable, the law says they are. So wouldn't it be safe to assume that when we don't, we just don't say they are? And when we do, we say they are?
Well, the the obligation of of uh making that election, we have given that to the taxpayer.
No, 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 no.
No, no, but let me, let me.
The G A R only, the G A R only allows him to elect to re- no, no, no.
Let me just say something.
But let me just, let me say my point first, and then you can, you can. The law only says they can elect to receive the tax credits for their liability of owed by the government to them. It doesn't.
And that's what we did, we 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 gave them the the credit.
Right, but are you giving the credit, is it being redeemed by him, if it's, is it?
In in other words, it, we gave them the credit. And your question now, whether it's 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 transferable or not, that's that's that's, it's silent. It didn't say that they could or they couldn't.
So, so what gives, what makes that tax credit from that taxpayer redeemable by that other taxpayer? Where in the law does it say that this tax credit, now that doesn't belong to the claimant?
Let me ask you, where in the law that says they can't do it?
I'm saying it doesn't say you can't.
But but it didn't say you can't.
That's why I'm asking you, where is the legal opinion?
But it didn't say also that you can't.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, where in your, can you give me a legal opinion that says you can't, that, can you, can you give me a ruling, a re- maybe a revenue ruling? Can you give me a revenue ruling or a tax ruling on the G A R that says, I hereby say that these tax credits can be claimed and redeemed by those other than the claimants? Were you asked about that? No, no, I'm, I'm, no, I'm asking, I'm asking John, I'm asking John, because the decision, because what he has already done, I'm asking him, what's the basis of that? And you're right, there may be a bill, there may be a bill. All I'm asking, I'm asking John.
It it it's 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 a silent, it's a silent, it it didn't say that whether it can be transferable or not and and the 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 owners wanna redeem their 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 uh uh credits by doing, by transferring.
Right, and and I'm saying, John, where, how do you treat then guy number three? You know, the third owner of that tax credit, how do you treat him? And and where's the basis for that? There must be some kind of of discussion that occurred between you, unless there was no discussion and you just said.
We did discuss it among our, and and we, at that point, we 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 looked at it and says, it 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 was silent. And at this point in time, the the owners of this property who elected to take it are 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 doing the transferring and we we were allowing it. I mean, if there's a law that uh that tells me, uh, you know, uh, the director that you can't do it, then maybe I should go back and 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 uh let these people know.
Well, or 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 there is a, an advice from your legal counsel that says, John, you can't do that. Did you discuss it with legal counsel?
We discussed it among ourselves.
Legal counsel included?
I don't know if if those guys discussed it with our legal counsel, but I discussed it with my management team.
Right.
And at that point in time, we we decided that uh it's silent and if the taxpayer uh wishes to transfer those those uh credits to other taxpayers, then we were allowing it.
Well, can you, can you then go back and ask your legal counsel? Because you have other requests. So I'm, I'm making that request here, and I'll be happy to put it in a letter, if you would, if you would like me to do it. But but what, what is it, how did you do, how, how is, how do you support allowing the third owner of that? Because it's only supposed to reduce to to be a credit towards what was needed to be paid to the, to the original claimant, right? And so how did, how can this claimant now, you know, uh, use it for his other obligations? And and why uh the reading of the law and the silence of it allows you to do it?
I'll 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 look into that.
No, 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 will you ask your legal counsel to issue you an opinion on that?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's it, that's, that's what I'm requesting. Now, again, you know, we we kind of say, we're we're only paying, we issued a tax credit which which we don't have the cash. When does a tax credit turn into cash? When does, when does cash account for the tax credit that's redeemed?
When they actually claim it on the return.
Okay, so when they claim it in the return, it becomes cash that would not, that should have been received, but it's not received.
But it's recorded as.
But it's recorded as revenue, yes. No, I understand revenue and cash, you're right, but so it does become cash. At some point, it's accounted for in the cash flow, correct? And in this case, it would be accounted for in this fiscal year's cash flow, correct? All these reductions. Whether whether it's charged against the cash flow of the of the uh of the alcohol or the cash flow of the general fund, it becomes charged against the cash.
It's not cash, so it's not, it's not in the cash flow, I mean, it is, it's recorded as revenue.
It is recorded as revenue.
It's not cash, it's not considered as cash.
I understand, but it 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 has to be accounted for in the cash because you would not receive that cash to fund what was appropriated from that revenue. In other words, if we appropriate thirty million dollars because that's what we say we're going to receive in taxes, and we issue fifteen million in, and we appropriate that thirty million, when you collect thirty million, you give that cash to Department of Education because that's what it was appropriated for. When you have the fifteen, somebody claims fifteen million of credit, it doesn't become cash, it's recorded as revenue, but the cash that you record, and you only, and the cash that you collect, if you collect, if you mean your projection of thirty, is only gonna be fifteen because that fifteen, which would have been cash, is not paid in. So now you only pay Department of Education fifteen million in cash, and you're shorting them by fifteen million. So it does turn into cash, and at some point, as you just mentioned, cash management has to kick in to ensure either you collect more revenue or you reduce the operation of D O E by fifteen because you don't have the cash to support that operation.
Yeah, but we have not reduced the operation.
No, I understand.
Of D O E, uh Senator, is that what you're inferring?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, it's just an example.
It's my responsibility to ensure that what has been allotted to D O E is is remitted to D O E.
That's correct.
And that's what I have done for the last three years.
Yes, except for last year, but yes.
No, no, that's, that is, that is wrong, Senator.
No.
Because last year.
Except for, except for last year, because, because the same thing happened in the health in, the same thing happened in the health insurance fund. The reimbursement for the health insurance fund, you did not collect that cash, yet you paid the obligation that was appropriated.
You're mixing a lot of things.
No, you're mixing it up. I am telling you exactly what, what, so, I'm just saying that, that's, that's what happened. No, because that's exactly what happened with the self-insurance fund. You did not collect the two point seven million dollars.
It's, we have been able to manage the cash.
You covered it, you covered it.
Twenty million dollars of tax credit redemption the last three years.
You covered that shortfall.
We have paid, we have paid D O E, we have not shorted D O E. We have given them all the allotments that that have, they have.
I, and I'm saying the D O E still says that they did not receive nine million dollars in cash last year.
That was because that that there was, the revenue did not come in for that fund.
And when the revenue did not come in for the self-insurance fund, did you short payments from those? No, you did not, you paid it, it's the same thing.
That is not right.
It's the same thing, so, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolín, and any other senators have questions, Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Vinita, John, I just, uh, I I know we brought up earlier the uh the interest rate amount. Uh, is that around six, six percent, seven percent on on the tax credits? Six percent?
Six percent.
So, how much is the government of Guam have been paying on the total amount? On the total amount owed, um, how much have we been paying in interest?
It's uh, it's about a hundred, I mean, hundred, uh, it's been about a hundred thousand, it's accruing about a hundred thousand a month. So, uh, the tax credits that happen, you're talk, referring to the La John landfill, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, those that have received the tax credits and have redeemed those amounts, uh, the interest is not accruing anymore on on those portions that have been redeemed.
But to to this date, or to this date, or whatever date, how much have we already paid in interest on the total amount owed?
It would be the tax that have been redeemed.
Yes, um, I I I know we basically, um, uh, the, I guess the principal that on that thirteen point three, I I believe the principal, I think it's about five point nine of six, and and I think the difference is about uh three million of interest that have accrued uh to that certain time when they started uh taking those credits. So the ratio, I don't know how much was taken on on, I have to go back, uh, Senator, and and look at how much of those um uh interest were taken during those those uh uh months from August to uh January.
The reason why I I bring this question up because I think we're missing uh uh something very key into why we're really, uh, in a sense, there's other elements, but there's something very key to why we have to pay this off, there's interest accruing. Uh, and I just want to know, do you have an estimate that how much the government will be saving if we use this tool of tax credits to pay the mull off?
Uh, well, you can take a, look at the judgment for the landowners, there's twenty one million is the judgment because there were three million that was deposited.
What would be the impact?
Prior to that, the the interest that has been accruing since two thou- the judgment says that you have to pay interest from the, from two thousand and eight, and the judgment was was rendered in November two thousand and twelve. And, uh, sen- I mean, Attorney Dooley wrote to the legislature in August to request if they could be paid, but, you know, there was no appropriation to to pay these. And, um, so interest has accrued uh from two thousand and eight to two thousand and thirteen at about one point three million dollars a year. So, you know, one point three for the last, um, what, five and a half years is about over seven million dollars that has accrued already, so it's already over seven, over thirty million, if if you will, and because of the interest that has accrued already. And, uh, so what what you, how you calculate it is you take the the tax that has redeemed and reduce it by by that amount, but remember that as long as the principal has not been been fully, fully utilized, then you still have to pay interest uh to that taxpayer. And then we're still accruing interest for those landowners that did not come forth and elect to get tax credits. So you still have more than fifty percent owners that that have not, have not uh come forth, so we still have to find ways to pay that landowner.
That's very good information to have for the record because I I think, uh, we're talking a lot about a lot more money than thirteen point three million.
Yes.
So if you did not have this tax credit option, what other option would you look at, look at to not only addressing this three point two, but the interest that is bearing on the total amount?
Yeah, I mean, the option would be the legislature to find funding because that's, that's, you hold the purse strings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Morrison, Senator Yamashita.
I I I simply just want to say to each of you that I appreciate, um, your ability to focus on the issues and your ability to respond the way you have. I think we've certainly developed and we've gotten so much better at that. And I agree with Senator Sniklas that things have gotten much better. And so for you to come in and try to keep focused, right, and remain, uh, remain strong is certainly appreciated. It's no easy task.
Thank you, it's not easy coming here.
I know it's not, I know it's not, it's no, no easy task, and that's certainly acknowledged, you know, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita, Vice Speaker Cruz.
Vinita, did I hear you say over the last three years, there's been twenty million dollars in tax credits?
No, I didn't say that, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't hear me.
No, in the last three years, we can play the tape back if you want.
The tax cred, the tax credits that have been redeemed, uh, this is for all programs.
For, yeah.
For all programs.
But twenty million?
That, uh, for the last three years, yeah, twenty million, from twenty eleven.
Can you provide us with a breakdown of how much per year and what the tax credit optimization was for each one of those?
Uh, yeah, I would refer to John on that.
But, Mr. Chairman, if you could, enjoy them.
We will, I will, what, John?
The other thing that I was wondering, you mean to tell me, well, one other thing, the judgment that was issued by the court?
Yes.
It said twenty one million total?
Yes.
Did it break down individually the amount owed to each one of the landowners?
There was a percentage, yes, uh, hang on, let me look at the judgment, because I have the judgment here.
I haven't seen the judgment, so that's why I'm asking. By percentage, but not by the specific amounts, not that one, and specific amounts? The three point four, but the remaining twenty one?
Available there.
So how did we know landowner C comes in? How would we know how much of a tax credit you were going to, uh, direct, John, to provide them for the land?
So it it would be the the balance, the remaining balance of the twenty one million is prorated by by percent ownership of the property, the interest.
The owner would would, um, uh, declare that amount that this is what they're owed, and I think that's something also when they come forward, right?
Yes, we we go with the judgment.
But you would take it from them as the amount, the the percentage, what that percentage actually means of the twenty one million?
Yes, prorated, prorate the twenty one million with the percent ownership that they have that is shown in the judgment.
So who does that calculation, John or you?
It's, it's here, it's it's showing here, we, we, uh.
No, I understand, somebody has five percent interest, it's it's five percent of the of the twenty one million or five percent?
They do their own calculations to ensure that our calculations are the same.
Okay, and you you said that the interest continues to accrue as long as they don't re- redeem the tax?
That is the question that I said that I want to post to the A G's office because that that is what I'm not clear on, whether the, because I posed that question to John, but but it's it's not clear, so that's what we'd like to to, uh, post to the A G's office whether the the issuance of the tax credit is considered ca- tax, uh, cash payable or whether the, um, cash payment is is considered, uh, issued, I mean, you know, done when they redeem. So so, um, that's that's what I I want to post to the A G's office to.
You you had no agreement with these individual taxpayers at the time that you released it and saying this is in full satisfaction with no further interest to be accrued?
There's, uh, there's existing form that was, that was provided back since nineteen seventy seven, so that that was what was used, um, to to give to the taxpayers, so.
And, but there was no specific uh understanding between yourself and the taxpayer that if I give you this ten million in tax credit, you'll no longer be able to continue to accrue interest on the ten million?
But I think it's it's John that would, could actually answer that because he's the one that issues the tax credit. because he's the one that issues the tax credit, not, not DOE. But I'm just trying to assist.
Do you make, do you make a, i- is there an agreement with the taxpayer that the, that the interest stops, or?
Yeah, I, I don't think there's, uh, public law, I think it's, it does allow the, uh, uh, interest to expire with that credit to use.
It, it's specific, in other words, it, you, you, the, the owner can take tax interest, and I believe even penalty, if I recall reading it, so, uh, that's something that, uh, when they came, they addressed what the, the, uh, principal, what the interest is, and what the, uh, what it, what the total amount is. So that's, that's something that's allowed by the public law, that they can use that as, as, uh, uh, credit in lieu of ca, uh, in lieu of taxes.
Are you reading that, Senator?
No, I, I.
Panglinen? Okay, so I, I, I think it, it's allowable that interest can be used for, for, to offset, um, uh, uh, taxes as, as credit in lieu of taxes, I mean, in lieu of cash. So, the question, I think, that we're raising now, does it, does it cap, at that point in time when they come in and basically, uh, say we wanna take this as, as, as credit against any local taxes? Uh, that's the question that we're, we're looking at now. Uh, or whether the balance of the principal continues to earn interest, uh, moving forward?
Specifically, if, if, with, with taxpayer C, he owns half the, the land. So you give him ten million dollars in tax credit. He takes the tax credit that you've given him, he's holding on to it, it's now April, just about. Seven months have elapsed. He's not redeemed any of the, the ten million. Is the interest still accruing from last August?
And that's what we're, we're, we're trying to say.
Senator, that's what I said, I'm going to post to the AG's office, because I have that question, the same question you have.
And this wasn't clarified or agreed to between yourself and the taxpayer when it's a credit?
It's, it's not clear in the law.
I, I understand, but you didn't.
So, so that's why it's, uh.
There, there's no agreement.
No, that's, that's, that's a different situation, yeah, it's.
Are the two of you aware of the Attorney General opinion from two thousand nine, as it related to COLA? And using the tax cred, using it, uh, to pay for taxes? The COLA certificates?
That continues to accrue interest?
No, I, I understand, but, uh, but the Attorney General said that without specific authorization to use a, to use a certificate or their tax credit, it could not be used to pay for taxes without specific authority. And that's why at that time, when we are considering the COLA.
But the authority is in, in pub, in public law, uh, fourteen sixty nine, to use tax credit.
For speci, that, that's what I'm saying. The, in two thousand and nine, the Attorney General said it had to be specific authority. It had to be specific as it be, date to the amount for the, um, for the soccer field. It had to be specific as to the amount for the, the Paseo. It had to be specific to the amount that the university might or could use for building the fields up at, up at the university. But there, I'm trying to figure out whether or not there was a specific, e- even in, in fourteen, whatever it was, seventy seven.
Fourteen six, fourteen, uh, sixty nine?
Sixty nine, that, it, that, it wa, there was no specific amount, I mean, authorization for that.
It, it's, it, it caps at the amount of the, uh, the property that is being created. And then it was the, it was the court judgment that imposed the six percent interest. So that is, that's where, you know, it, it, it didn't, it didn't cap it. So because of the court judgment, we have to give the six percent interest, it wasn't, the law didn't, didn't say that.
I, I think the law does, does cap it at the amount that the, the taxpayer elects. If, I was reading that, uh, I know there was a question that there's no cap into this particular credit, but if the, if the owner elects that, uh, he has so much, uh, that is owed to him, that is the cap, uh, and it, the regulation law even specified that if he takes it in one month, and it, and it, it's still a balance, he can take it to the other month. If it takes the whole year and there's still a balance, he can roll it over to the following year again. In other words, the cap is whatever was, was, uh.
I, I understand, I was just, I was just trying to figure out whether or not if, if they took twelve or fifteen months, or even three years, whether or not the six percent continued to accrue during that period. But you're gonna get that answer from.
Yes.
The Attorney General, you, you, you had, didn't have that clarification or that understanding when you issued. The, um, just a last, I, assurance that I need, and, and have this on the record, Mr. Neil, you know, is it this, is it your statement today that regardless of the amount of the tax credits that are being redeemed against alcohol and tobacco taxes, that it is the position of the administration to keep whole and make whole all of the appropriations that we, as a legislature, authorized appropriated through the Healthy Futures Fund?
What, whatever, whatever allotment is received, I, I ba, I go by allotment, whatever BBMR releases.
And if.
To the Department of Administration, and it is recognized as revenue, so it, it, that, that's how we, we have.
And the Healthy Futures Fund was supposed to have about sixteen million last year. So if the revenue
It's considered, to consider.
Was seventeen to seventeen million dollars.
Yes.
But, over the year, various corporations or individuals.
Use tax credit.
Use tax credits to the amount of eight million.
Yes.
And the, and the fund is short cash.
Cash, that's cor, yes.
It is your assurance of this.
We still recognize, yes, we still recognize the revenue, so.
You still recognize the revenue, and you will keep and make whole.
Yes.
Department of.
The cancer fund, I know you're very concerned with that, yes, that's correct.
Cancer fund, behavioral wellness, every single agency that's listed on that. But, and, but you assure us at this point that, that you will keep that whole.
Um, just a quick question before we, we wind down, uh, this whole, um, landfill issue was addressed before I came into office, but, uh, I just wanted to clarify, we actually condemned the landfill property? The government actually condemned that property?
It was by eminent domain in two thousand and eight.
It was an im- eminent domain?
It was probably, yeah.
Imminent dom, it was, it was.
It was condemned, yeah.
It was condemned, and then we.
It, it was not the choice of the landowners, that, it, it was the government that took the property.
And so now it was the court judgment now that has made the condemnation price be what it was when they made the ruling?
That's, that's correct.
Plus interest accrued?
Six percent from two thousand and eight.
Okay, and as we work together to try and retire this obligation, you know, I mean, I think the, what we brought up today was all very, very relevant. I mean, we need to make sure the credits that we're issuing are not going to offset critical things like cancer.
Yes.
We need to make sure that, um, the, um, amounts that we're authorizing in credits are not, um, are, are, I think it would be great for the people of Guam if we can make sure that's actually not accruing interest while it's already authorized.
Yeah, it's, that's correct.
Yeah, I think we need to work towards that. Um, I, I think that we need to figure out, John, and, and maybe we can work more, more closely on how we can assure that we're, we're still taxing these tax credits, because if they are payments in lieu of cash, they still should be taxed as a, as a cash, cash-like form of compensation. So we need to work together to make sure that we're still, we're still taxing those, those instruments. If the tax credits are being sold, and they're, and they're being sorted at discount and then claimed at full value, you know, I would say that that's almost like a capital gain. You know, it's like claiming a, uh, it's like, um, getting a, a zero coupon bond at a discount and then being able to claim it at par. So, you know, th- there's a lot of things that, that, that's come up in this hearing that I think are gonna be very good for us to work towards. Um, I share a lot of concerns with my colleagues as well in terms of, um, the, a- a- and, and with what you stated in your opening, Benita, a lot of the tax credit things that we specifically unauthorized under law, that Speaker Panglinen worked hard on, that you, that you very kindly recognized him for, I think that those kind of things have benefited our community a great deal. But it's when we begin to, to issue tax credits without going through the public hearing process, and without actually having a separate law to authorize it, that we, that we start to have these kind of, these kind of challenges. And when we go back to nineteen seventy seven, and, and, you know, I think it would have been much healthier for us to address the La John issue through a, 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 a direct piece of legislation, similar to what Speaker Panglinen's worked on, that may have, um, gone the tax credit route, maybe included, uh, property for property swaps. It probably would have been good to go through that process also, so we could have clarified if the tax credits would have halted the interest accrual process. So going forward with tax credits, and, and we do have a bill that we introduced, but I think it, it would, it would just be healthy for our whole community if we can, um, if we can bring any future tax credits into the public domain and have us have a dialogue about it, so we can fully assess the value, or lack thereof, that it will have for the benefit of our community. But I, I thank you both very much, you know, one of the, um, Speaker Panglinen?
I just wanted to, to clarify on the La John issue, that, um, the total judgment in the lawsuit, uh, was the twenty one plus the three point four that, that was deposited.
Yes.
But that's not for acquisition of land. The twenty one was for economic damages to property that the landowners continue to own. So we only acquired maybe one tenth of the property, and in the court case, the judgment of the additional twenty one is for economic damages, because now the landowners have a property next to a landfill, but they kept to keep that property, so we, we did not buy that, we did not condemn the property itself.
That's very key then, Speaker, because fourteen sixty nine only authorizes tax credits for condemnation. And condemnation means that we actually acquired the property for the government and it's within the domain of the government.
This, this is.
And so if we're issuing tax credits for economic damages and not for actual condemnation, then we have an issue.
The, the, the judgment said it was for eminent condemnation, eminent domain, that's, that's what I read in the, uh.
Can we have that on the record, Speaker?
Yes, the, the judge, the, the total judgment, uh, that totaled a little over twenty five million, three point four one was for the condemnation of the property in which the La John landfill sits on today. The additional twenty one million was for economic damages for the surrounding properties of that which remain in the possession and ownership of the landowners.
It, it's saying here that the government of Guam claimed it versus one point three.
Yes.
Uh, thousand, million square meters.
That's correct.
For, uh.
Yeah, I don't dispute any of that.
And this is for eminent, eminent domain action.
That's correct, I don't dispute, so.
Uh, eminent domain is, is, uh, condemnation of land. That's my understanding of what eminent domain is.
Yes, but the judgment is, there's a separate judgment for the acquisition of the physical landfill itself, and then the balance of the judgment was for economic damages to the surrounding properties.
And, and it says here in the last paragraph, it says, "It is hereby ordered a judge and decree that landowners have judgment against the government of Guam in the amount of twenty five million dollars." So I don't know how much more clear can that be?
No, that's fine, I, I, I see where that, but, I, 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 that's a very interesting point that Speaker Panglinen brings up, because if tax credits are authorized in fourteen sixty nine for condemnation of property, and I, and I remember when you were reading it, it specified condemnation of property, we need to be, be very, very, um, diligent in, in determining exactly how that definition of fourteen sixty nine relates to the judgment of the courts and what exactly it is that we're having to compensate for.
Yeah, but Senator, I just read to you what the decree from the judge is.
Oh, that's fine, but if the judge is determination.
It's for landowners for the condemnation, so I don't know how much more clear we can be.
No, but then if the, if the judge's saying condemnation, then what does condemnation mean for the government? Does that mean we own that property?
It's eminent, it's eminent domain, you only con, you only condemn properties through eminent domain.
No, I understand, but what does it mean when we condemn it? Does, does that, do, do those properties now belong to the government?
That's correct.
Okay, so all, so all the property that we've claimed on.
Whatever the agreement was, but it's, I'm just going by the decree of the court.
No, I understand, but, but, yeah, I think that that's something that we need to, we, we, we all need to, to look at and clarify, because, um, if, if it, if it was tax credits for condemnation, how is condemnation defined with respect to fourteen sixty nine and with respect to the court order?
It's condemnation, it's taking of private property.
No, I understand, Benita, but what I'm, what I'm saying is if the court order is for compensation for damages that are not.
But the court order didn't say a compensation for damages, it's con, it's compensation for landowners.
Well, I think that we're going to have to clarify that.
For eminent domain, so.
Because, you know, one of the questions I had from my staff, because.
We're not lawyers, so here.
No, I understand, but no, but the reason why we're having this. No, it's not frivolous, Benita, I think it's necessary for us to have the dialogue.
I didn't say frivolous, I said fruitless.
Oh, fruitless, I definitely don't.
Because we keep going around and around.
I definitely don't think it's fruitless.
So because you, you are not a lawyer, I'm not a lawyer, and we're trying to make legal interpretation.
Oh, no, and what we're doing is we're having a dialogue on things that we need to look at more closely, and definitely talking to the lawyers is something that we like, we need to do at this point, because, you know, and, and that was something I was asking myself, what's the size of the dump exactly in terms of a land area? No, in terms of acreage? I, I remember, um, someone was sharing with me the acreage size, and I was just totally shocked that a thirty million dollar judgment would be for that amount of property, you know, for, for, for that amount of acreage. And if we are paying thirty million for condemnation, then that means that thirty million in condemnation should mean that total amount of acreage now becomes the property of the government of Guam. But if that thirty million dollars is not for condemnation, because we're gonna acquire the property.
Senator, we're questioning the, the judgment of the court here.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm questioning the interpretation of, of the government of Guam with respect to applying fourteen sixty nine to the judgment of the court. If the judgment of the court is saying that we're gonna compensate for the condemnation of land and for damages, then we can only apply fourteen sixty nine to the condemnation of the land, not to the damages.
It, it all relates to the, to the landowner.
So let's make sure that, but, but, but fourteen sixty nine is specific to condemnation. So we need to look at that closely, guys, let's make sure that we're not issuing tax credits for damages and, uh, in lieu of, of condemnation, that's, that's something very, very different, so. Um, let's just get a, a closer look at that, Speaker Panglinen, I know that you're gonna be very diligent on that as well, but the committee thanks you so much for your time. Um, getting together and talking about money is always, uh, you know, they always say.
It's exciting.
Oh, they always say in families, never, never, uh, talk about money at the table, you know, but we always gotta sit down at the table and talk about the people's money, but I thank you all very much for joining us today. I thank my colleagues for, um, their time and their attention. Um, Senators, uh, you, very good work today, I'm, I'm grateful for the committee for putting in their efforts. The, um, oversight hearing is hereby adjourned at three fifty this afternoon, thank you very much.
Thank you.